So do we have a motion to open?
Yeah. Motion to open, motion to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for October first, 2025.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, a little poll on Robert.
Yes.
Colby.
Colby, yes.
Am I, you appointing me as a full voting member?
I would be, I guess I can.
And then I can vote.
Yeah, and then I'll say yes, so we have three to open administratively. So at this point, I will be appointing Darlene as a full voting member of the ZDA for purposes tonight.
I think you're able to do that before the motion to open the meeting, just as a point of war, I think. Can you check on that for us?
Yeah, you can open the meeting and immediately appoint.
Yeah.
I just care.
Or right, or can we do the other way? But you need a motion to open the meeting, no.
You know, I've never heard of a motion to open the meeting other than you guys, so I don't know where that tradition's at.
Yeah, I know. We open the hearing, but the meeting, okay.
Yeah, you call the meeting to order.
Call the meeting to order, which you can do.
Which I can do, and then I can appoint, or we'll get this straightened out.
Technicalities.
Was that a motion to appoint her?
No, no. About, I just do it. Yeah, I get to.
Right.
That's one of my powers, one of my superpowers. Okay, so this meeting is being recorded. Did anyone get a chance to review the minutes?
I did.
Yes. Yeah, you did.
All right, so why don't, since we have a couple of minutes, why don't we just get through those? So why don't we start with the sixth of August.
Move to approve the August sixth meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, Darlene?
Yes.
Colby, yes.
Robert?
Robert, yes.
And I'm also yes, so we'll approve those. And then the second one is September seventeenth.
Move to approve the September seventeenth meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. Colby?
Colby, yes.
Robert?
Robert, yes.
Yes, Darlene, yes.
And Vicki, yes. All right, so we can get into carry administration here. And let's see who's on, just doing a quick look. All right, it looks like it's just us, and the meeting was set for six thirty-five. I don't see the applicants. Nope, I did send them an email, let them know when, you have the information for the meeting, but I'm already on. Now, since we're continuing the meeting, we should, we just move to.
We can just move to open it.
Reopen the meeting.
Move to reopen the hearing. The, look for the applicant's name.
Addison Newt.
Move to open the Addison Newt hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Darlene?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Colby, yes.
And Vicki, yes. So Addison is on the Zoom now.
Correct.
All right, so that's good. Close that. Hi Addison, thanks for joining. We just reopened the meeting for the hearing from previous time to go over your request. In the meantime, Beth, I believe we've gotten to feedback from council, town council. One question I had is in the, oh, did everybody get a chance to look at that? The message?
Yes.
Is, yeah, is it, was that directly from town council, or was it, because I couldn't tell who it was from. It's from an associate, approved by town council. Okay. Under the direction of you. So it was an associate lawyer, associate of town council, is what you meant?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Did you guys get to read the, the opinion from town council? Addison, did you get to read it?
Yes, I did.
So was there additional? Information that came in? I don't think, I think this is the only thing we've gotten additional.
Yeah, we, we continued the hearing so that we could get the legal opinion from town council. Can I, can I speak?
Can I just speak? Yes, while we, well, so we're going to move into board discussion at this point.
Yeah. So one of the reasons originally, when I had a problem, when I was, I was, I just wanted to say, when I was talking about what's allowed and specially permitted, I hadn't really reviewed the previous special permit decisions that were on file. So the part I was kind of missing is that this was a, was a special permit for a non-conforming use structure type of a thing. What I was seeing was the hotel motel, and in the outline commercial district, it's in permitted and it's also in specially permitted. So I was thinking, we gave him a special permit for the hotel motel, the transient use. And then, so when I was reviewing all this, I'm going, boy, why do we get into the definitions so much? It seemed like Garcia got into what you call it. So I guess basically what he's done is, he's trying to call a spade a spade. All right, so he must have gone in there for some reason and said, hey, this isn't transient in nature. These people live here, might have addresses, probably getting mail, I'm just making some assumptions. Somehow he determined these people are residents, not transient nature. So he kind of went the route of, well, what is it? It's a cottage, he came up with cottage dwelling. I did a little bit of homework on this, I'm just sharing what my thoughts are. I went through all these definitions, and I'm like, okay. He, for some reason, he didn't like the hotel, somehow they picked up on the hotel, okay, it's transient nature, but it doesn't allow kitchens. And I'm like, what is, like, why are we making a big deal out of that? If you go back to the special permit that was issued, it was for an existing non-conforming use, which was hotel in nature, and the buildings had had some kitchens. So I think the kitchen part is what caused the non-conforming nature of that special permit. So when you go through the criteria of special permit, you know, is it not more detrimental than the existing use? So if you've already got a hotel going on, motel, whatever, you get transient nature, you're going to revamp these buildings. I guess the zoning board said, what's the big deal if they have kitchens? You know, if you have transient, transient can be what, up to two weeks, fourteen days? Is that what they consider transient nature? Well, more than a few days, someone's probably going to want to get, anyways. That's where I think the non-conforming nature of those previous special permits came in, because they were allowing the kitchens. So did it have to fit the hotel definition? I don't, I don't see that, that, but the building inspector did, and he was trying to get it to fit a definition. In the end, I'm going, what is it? Okay, so here we are now, let's, let's just say here's where we're at now. There were two special permits given, let's just go with the last one. Two thousand ten, the zoning board issued a special permit for hotel motel transient, insisted it be transient in nature, and allowed the kitchens. And they found it not to be more detrimental. So now what's being, now, in the meantime, that was, this permit, and I'm going to say this with a little bit of caution, Addison, so pick up on this part of it. That special permit that was issued in two thousand twelve, two thousand ten, should have been renewed every two years. I know you didn't own the property since then, so it's not, this isn't all your fault kind of thing, right, or why, where we are today. So every two years, that permit should have been renewed, and there should have been applications, it hasn't.
Been re, or we should have specified a different renewal date, right? Because we can win.
In the, in the zoning bylaw, if you don't specify, it's automatically two years.
Yeah.
So that, I went back and checked on that. So it's been what, thirteen years since this permit was issued? So basically, this permit, sorry, is, is it valid, is it, right? So now you're asking for a modification of a special permit. Number one, we don't do modifications. Number two, even if we did, I don't see how we could do one on a permit that's not in existence or valid.
No, it's not, yeah.
So where I'm thinking, and this creates a little bit sticky here, the, I don't want to say decision, the opinion of town council even says in there that the applicant should be reapplying to ask for a new special permit for what you're looking to do. That's my opinion as well. I don't see how we could go, possibly go through all the criteria to see if something's more detrimental, then what? An existing use that's expired, that's not happening? So I, I just legally, I don't know where to go with that. That said, if a new app, so basically what you would do is, I think, and Beth could help, you'd withdraw this application, do a new one that says, I want to do what I want to do, kind of thing. And while we're saying that, I would be more than willing to waive any, any like new application fees, because you've already gone there, you've already done that. I don't think that would be fair. While we're on that, when you, when you do an app, you've seen the criteria for special permit, I don't have it in front of me. There's some easy stuff, the visual, character, nature, blah, 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 there's a lot of stuff that doesn't change. It's really the use that's non-conforming. Not to mention, I think the building inspector was being really nice, picking on definitions. Basically, what he could have done was said you're in violation of a special permit that was issued, and maybe, I don't know whether he's being nice, or maybe he did that because he considers the permits not valid to say you're in violation. Either way, I, I think he kind of gave you, he gave you a way to try to go rectify a problem. So those are my two things. You got a permit that's kind of expired, and the use currently doing right now is in violation of our bylaw. It's, it's, or in violation of the special permit that was issued before. So I think in front of us, if we had a new application, I believe what you're trying to ask for is permanent, what would you say, not transient residency, but lease, I don't, I don't.
Long, long-term residency.
Right. What I would be looking for in this new application is the criteria that we have to go through to decide whether this is not more detrimental than the existing. And you're, now, just so you know, your existing use of this property should be what the previous decision allowed you to do. So that's what you're going to compare it to. You're kind of going to pretend, okay, the permit that was issued in two thousand ten, that's existing, because that's what was allowed, and that's what we'll compare to, to what you want to do, and show us.
Okay.
Show us how what you want to do compared to what was allowed and approved is not more detrimental per the bylaw. I would, if it's confusing, I would probably talk to someone who has some zoning experience to help with that, because as someone who has zoning experience, I need to be convinced I'm having a hard time with it. And I, we can go into that part of it if you want, but I just wanted to lay out kind of the, the basis of what I've seen, where we are, and how do we get to some relief? Yeah. Procedurally, then there's, you know, passing the special permit criteria. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. I mean, our, our obligation is to make sure that we're following the bylaws and any legal, you know, any laws that apply to this, even if they haven't been followed correctly in the past. And we, we just can't continue a wrong forward.
Right, and I kind of was trying to like maybe give some hints along the way to the applicant. It's tough, you, you have to think about, okay, you got all these classifications of zoning, you got your residential A, your residential B, your downtown commercial, your neighborhood commercial, your outline commercial. And as you go down the line, you're like, okay, well, my downtown commercial and residential, that's kind of where rental is. And as you get outline, you're, you're more commercial, right? So when you look at the bylaw, it doesn't say anything about multifamily, no, I'm just going to call it, to me, this is multifamily housing. You got a, you got a house, single-family house, well, maybe an accessory apartment, and a lot of other dwelling units. That's a multifamily property, you have multifamilies on it. So we can, it doesn't fit any of the definitions, and I'm not worried about that per se. I mean, we might have to address that somehow, but how do we get to those pieces? How is he going to tell us how it's not more detrimental when our bylaw doesn't even allow it? If somebody was to come, just apply for it new, and then figure out how it's not more detrimental to the use? Does that, does, am I confusing you, is that clear, or? Yeah, okay, good.
Right, so I think for me, you know, it's, it's clear that we need a new application, because the both special permits have expired and were, were not renewed. And we can't amend a permit whether it's expired or not, so special permit. So we, we need to go through that process, and I'm, I would be in favor of, you know, waiving the fee at this point. We, you know, we want to come to a good resolution here, and we don't want to have that in the way. So I don't know, Beth may be able to share with you the special permit criteria, so you know what to work against.
Could you have it made clear?
It was in the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'll start from the bottom. Impact on ground and surface water quality, environmental, that's really not us anyways. We, that's other boards to decide whether, I think in this situation, it's not anything we would find. Adequacy of utilities, you're not changing most likely anything to that. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal, border health is, is going to be on top of that. Source of water and drainage, none of the topography and stuff, none of that's changing. It's impact on neighborhood visual character of using vistas, most likely that's not changing. It's really A, B, and C to me, if, and that's why I would want the applicant to address those and tell me how, how it doesn't, it isn't more detrimental than the current use. As a board, we shouldn't sit here and try to make things up for the applicant. That's, that's just not how it's done. So adequacy in terms of the site in terms of, for proposed use, suitability of the site for the proposed use, impact on traffic flow and safety. The first two, the one thing that comes to mind is, you can't even get multifamily housing in this town unless you have eight acres. And there, so there's, there's different areas throughout. Maybe, and I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, and that's why, if you want to contact somebody who's got zoning experience to help frame this, that says, yeah, tell me, get me to think differently. It doesn't mean I'm right, I just need to be convinced that what you want to do isn't more detrimental than the existing use.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, I'm submitting a new application, and I'm asking for a special permit, a new special permit to be granted, allowing for a permanent or long-term residency. I get that. Could we, and I know you said it's not, it's not your job to make up or to invent a reason or whatever, but I'm, I'm wondering if you could give me some examples of either something that you would find convincing or unconvincing, maybe, of this, that legal term of not more detrimental? Like, do you have any ideas of, like, what would unconvincing, like, for example, if I brought up, if I said, you know, at a time when housing's very expensive, you know, we're, we're providing affordable housing for people who don't need anything more than a, than a studio apartment? Is that something that you find, like, I just don't want to go through the application process and then find out that it, it's not really what you, you know, I missed the mark of what you were expecting?
That's why I highly suggest you consult with somebody who has some zoning background that can help you answer those questions.
Okay, right, and so I'm thinking though, like, let's say I talk to, you know, Mr. Garcia and Beth, and in collaboration, we come up with something. At the end of the day, though, I have to convince you. So it's not that an expert, you know, an expert, or somebody else who thinks they're an expert, might just be on a different wavelength than you are. That's why I'm, I'm wondering about your opinion specifically, but if you, if, you know, what, what do you think about that?
So think about, so the original permit was for short-term hotel motel. How is having transient, so transient versus long-term? How does that change the use of the property? So I'm trying to think of an example, it's not like that, like, when we, we talked, I'm trying to think of some of them.
Well, yeah. Traffic would be one, transient versus long-term, I mean, traffic, permanent resident, I don't know, there's, could be more, I don't know, there could be, but see, you know how the properties being used, and is some of it still transient and some longer residence? Maybe some of it's still transient with. I don't know, do you sign leases for, have people there for two, three, four, five years? People there for a couple of weeks, a month, you have a mixture? Let's say, maybe some of it's still transient. Maybe it's not all more like detrimental, I don't know.
But remember, we want to, we want to see if, what the difference is, and then is that detrimental?
Okay, I guess, a point of clarification, detrimental to, to who or what? Because I'll give you an example, so what I would, if I was just off doing this right now myself, I would be making those arguments of, you know, providing affordability, like you said, there's less traffic that, that, you know, potentially less noise, because there's fewer people coming in and out frequently, and better like integration of the, you know, citizenry into the community, because they're not transient. And, but, so all of these things that are coming to my, to mind are things that I consider benefits, but I don't know that they have anything to do with zoning. And so I, that's what, so you think that would not be, all of those would be irrelevant?
Right, so like, when the, a lot of people make comments, say, oh, you know, yeah, the impact, if, if something was to happen and you, and you had to do transient only, and those poor people that are expecting to stay there a long time, that would really stink. And that's, that's not a reason, you know, the, when they gave that as a reason, oh, that would be a terrible impact. Well, it's not the town's fault that you're not using the property as was allowed. You know, you're, you're basically.
Okay, right, so, so this kind of gets at the heart of my question, which is, so we've established, it's not that I'm making the case that this is not, or not more detrimental to the town or its citizenry, or, or the citizens. So who, so then what is the thing? Is it the zoning board that, that, that I'm making, like, it's not any more detrimental to you guys as the zoning board?
Kind of like a legal case, it's, and so I said, I would talk to someone who has experience in zoning, not the building inspector, not Beth, but maybe a builder, an attorney, somebody who knows zoning, land use person that, it'd go a little deeper than that.
And, and look at the special permit criteria.
Right, right.
Because that, that's what we're going to be looking.
Detrimental's a word that like, I understand how.
All right, I'm sorry to keep harping on this, but here, let me just try to, so it's not that I'm confused about the word detrimental, it's more about detrimental to whom? And I, do I need to seek out an expert to understand that? Because I feel like that's a really basic thing that I'm just trying to understand.
Well, detrimental to the zoning bylaw in itself, the town, the, the impact on zoning in general, so.
Well, it's, it's, it's a neighborhood.
In the neighborhood.
Yes.
Neighborhood means, I couldn't find a definition for that, but still, if you can outline.
Well, it doesn't say detrimental to the neighborhood and the town, right? What's the, what's the, what's the motion that we have to make?
Let's see, the proposed, here's an example of, a motion would be, the proposed use will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site.
That's the motion we, well, that's the special permit motion, but then there's the non-conforming motion.
Yeah, which I don't really.
And that's the one that says, that has the word detrimental into it.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at the, the legal opinion, I do see the language, it, it detrimental to the neighborhood. So I see at least that part. With, I guess the neighborhood being people living in the surrounding area.
Correct.
So if, if I'm understanding that correctly, then I think that all of those reasons I gave earlier, off the top of my head, would be applicable.
In a bigger sense, I mean, you could also add in there, it's not just the people in the neighborhood, the neighborhood is zoned outline commercial district. So what is, yeah, so what's being done in the neighborhood? It's kind of a broader picture.
Yeah, we're struggling because.
I'm not, yeah, we're not allowed to do this for you.
Yeah, it's sort of, we could get too much detail we get.
Yeah.
It's not, not appropriate.
I would like to see you get creative and come to me and say, yeah, this is, but we have two other board members here. I've done a lot of talking, and I think they should have some input. And maybe they have better thoughts.
Good, Colby.
Okay, I'm jumping unless you do want, want to, Robert?
No, we're going to call on you first.
Okay, I, I guess I foresee it going this way. I thought, the way I interpreted the lawyer's remarks was that the special permit, even though it's flawed, or there are things that need to be revamped, you have a special permit that is applicable. And the, the, it's the use of the, the structures that is in, that needs some more verbiage, some more, better outlines. And for us to decide if the non-conforming use is more detrimental to the neighborhood, I, I didn't see such a legal issue. And I was surprised that there wasn't more of a definition use in the, in the proposed motions. I thought that was kind of crucial, and it seemed like cottage dwelling was the best fit for the, for these properties, for, well, for the, for the structures on the property. So I'm, I'm a little bit at a loss here, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little messy.
It's, it's.
Yeah, it's a little messy, because like, we're taking the, what, how it was handled ended up not being the proper thing, and so we're, we're trying to clean, clean it up and do it properly.
I understand, I can, I can, I, I can see the application being redone with.
Here's what makes it messy. The, the building inspector is trying to call it something, a definition, and I'm saying, don't focus on that, because that's irrelevant. It really is, what is allowed in the OCD is what's relevant. What's allowed, what's permitted, what's specially permitted, that's what's relevant. And you got to look at the bylaw and go, okay, this is what the previous, if it's not allowed, if you were to just come in today and go, I want to, I got a single-family home and I want to put in nine cabins in the OCD, no, you can't do that. Does that, do you make, does that make? No, you can't do that, does that, do you make, does that make sense?
Yes, but isn't that why he's, you know, submitting an application for a special permit, isn't that why?
If he wanted to do a special permit to do that brand new, it would be no, it's not allowed.
Exactly, yeah.
But because there was, it was pre-existing non-conforming. That's where, but it was pre-existing non-conforming for a hotel. Motel, use, transient nature, that's what was pre-existing non-conforming, he wants to change it to. Longer residency, which is like multi-family, and it's not allowed. So tell me how it's not more detriment, something that's not even allowed, if somebody was able to walk in.
So.
How is it not more detrimental?
So may, maybe the answer to that is that it's not multifamily, it's cottages.
It's still the same thing, in my, there isn't one, okay, there's cottages, but who are you putting in the cottage? If, if you were to say, I got a cottage, a dwelling, okay, an accessory apartment. Is, um, a distinct portion of a single-family dwelling or, or a unit and accessory structure. On a single-family lot having its own kitchen, sleeping, bathroom facility, subordinate size to the principal part of dwelling or structure. Okay, that's an accessory apartment, apartment unit. A room or enclosed wall space within a dwelling or apartment multi-family building. Used or intended for use by one family for living, sleeping, cooking, eating. Apartment multi-family, um, a, a building, a structure having a roof or cover. And forming a shelter for persons, animals, or property. We got the cottage dwelling, and then there's this dwelling, a building or part thereof designated, erected, and used for continuous. And permanent, permanent habitation for one or more families or individuals. The cottage dwelling, okay, that's, so, fine, cottage dwelling is the definition. How do you get there? How was that ever allowed? Is it allowed? If you wanted to come into that zone and put in nine cottage dwellings around a single-family home, would it be allowed? Is that what was there to be approved for non-conforming use? It's, that's where non-conforming is very difficult. And we can't, was, we like it.
So it was a, hold on, hold on a second, wait, 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 so, so I just wanna understand this, this comparison. Um, where you're saying you wouldn't grant the constru- the new construction of all these units to someone who just has a single-family lot. Therefore, there's, that my application is sort of suspect, or not suspect, but you, you, you're sort of saying, well, why would I grant? This after the fact thing, if I wouldn't grant the construction in the first place, right? Um, and I guess, I mean, I'm looking at the, the, um, legal opinion here. And it says the ZBA may grant the relief requested, so well, there I'm seeing, it's at your discretion, so. So you could kind of do whatever you wanted, and then two is that.
Oh, wait, let me stop you right there.
Sure.
If you answer the quest, special permit questions. That make us decide it's not more detrimental, that's why I'm guiding you.
Right, right, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is this question of not more detrimental, I can, I feel like there's an argument to be made that it is more detrimental. To construct from scratch, this stuff that you just, you know, this hypothetical scenario you're laying out about. Taking a single-family home and then suddenly adding all this residential, these ca- these cottages on top of that, right now, you're gonna get all these detrimental effects. Whereas in this case, to, what I'm saying is that by making long-term residential, which is already existing, illegal. That's gonna cause a lot of detrimental effects similar to, to the reasons why you wouldn't wanna build them in the first place, to displace all these people. And then get transient in and out, you know, people there, that's, instead, that's gonna create. This de- these detrimental effects that you're, that you're sort of are looking to avoid in that, that scenario you laid out, does that make sense?
I don't know why the fathers thought transient was okay and multifamily wasn't. But you've got to convince this board that putting in regular that was not thought of is not more detrimental than transient. That's a big, and I'm just trying to give you a.
All right, sure, sure, and I'm trying to convince you, so I'm just, and, and all these things I'm saying is exactly what I'd probably write in the new application. And so I would just like to get some feedback, is what I just explained convincing or not, I mean, to you, it sounds like it's, it sounds like maybe not. And I would be interested to hear what the other members have to say, and then at the end of that, if not, I mean, why not? I, I, I wanna do what's right by the law and, and make a convincing case to you guys, I just want to understand. If I'm not thinking correctly right now, like, what can, what else is there, cause I'm s- sort of struggling to think. Of what else, what other. What, you know, case notes.
It's gonna be, oh, if I was in the neighborhood, the difference to you would be, well, what's the level of activity?
The activity?
Um, you've, you've got a lot of permanent residents on a smaller lot than what's normally allowed. How is that not more detrimental? Um, let me just throw a stranger out there, what's your pet policy?
Um, the, by default, I don't allow, uh, pets, but I sort of do, uh, case by case.
So on two point two acres, are you gonna have people with ten to twenty dogs on two point two acres? Or just throwing it out there for the neighborhood, if I live next door, I wouldn't want twenty dogs next door.
And, and I, I agree with you there, I think, um, there need to be better outlines for this property. As far as, you know, number of parking, um, you know, the, it's a busy intersection there, you have to consider the traffic in. In and out, but the, the bylaw, um, I'm, I'm not getting hung off on it, I'm, because. Even in the outline, uh, commercial district, they allow detached single, uh, one-family dwellings.
Okay, however, the bylaws say you only can have one per lot.
Per lot.
Does say that somewhere?
Yeah, it was in the legal, I think.
That's just, yeah, Robert, what say you?
I think the point, the point of this is that all the previous applications, plus what the attorney is saying. That this is, this still is, and it, and it will remain basically forever, a pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, so we have to keep that in mind, and then, yeah, the explanation of. That, that this proposed change from transient to, uh, to, uh, full-time occupancy, whatever it's called. Um, is not more detrimental to the neighborhood, that's, that's really the crux of it, I think, right there. And I think going back to the twenty-two oh, two thousand nine and two thousand ten special permits that were issued. Um. I mean, they were issued saying, yes, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use, so I think it'd be hard for us to suddenly come out and say. Okay, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use and we're gonna deny it all of a sudden, I can't really see that happening. But yeah, we need, we need following our rules and regulations, um, to be able to explain, basically. To explain to the town, or to know why this was, why this should be approved and why it's. Uh, I mean, I'll say why it's to the benefit of the town to do this.
Displacing people, I wouldn't go there, but I would just go with the nature of the use, transient versus long-term residence, and what differences? On each would there be, and describe those differences and, and how it won't be worse than what you have. I don't wanna say what you have now, what you should have now.
And I think you should make a point of, of the previous applications being citing hotel motel. Um, you should make a point that, that this is a change from ho- potential hotel motel to cottage dwelling. Following the definition of that, a detached one-family dwelling that does not exceed eighteen hundred square feet. Um. Excluding non-dwelling areas attic and stuff, which is, which it seems to me that's what these dwellings are. I would not, I would not consider these multifamily by any means. I know there's never nine on, nine on the lot, or whatever, ten on the lot, but that's still not the definition of multifamily.
No, it's not the definition, but whether you had nine families put together and the buildings were connected. Or whether they all have, you can drive around them, to me, you got nine families on the same amount of acres as new, all living on the same.
Yeah, yeah.
So, not definition-wise, like, I don't, there really isn't a definition for what this is. And I think this should be, I, you know, we should be killing, I really think. That if the town wants to go to start allowing, um, long-term tenants on. Any type of land in town, there needs to be some revisitation of these descriptions, the definitions. And, um, of the bylaw, maybe they should go into the OCD and, and add that in there. So. We need to move with the.
But, but wouldn't that open up, I mean, like, it, what I, I sense that you don't want this. Um, decision to open up some sort of Pandora's box where you feel like obligated to do things that other, you know, grant requests from other people. So, I feel like I don't, I don't wanna go down that path, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to do this where it's sort of, uh. You, you know what I mean, like, I've just, I'm just.
Well, would it not specifically allowed or specially allowed? Well, that's what's happening here, if we grant a special permit to allow long-term residency in this type of a zone. We better have a darn good reason, so we better have a really good reason for it not being more detrimental. To allow a use that's different than what's allowing, you know, that non-conforming use.
Right, and I think, I mean. Not to belabor it, but I think that, like, the, the reason that sort of threads this needle here. Is that we have something going from existing that's been in operation for decades, and making that legal versus building new things. Does that make sense? I mean, that's kind of how I'm thinking about threading that needle for you, where you could feel free to sign off on this. Without feeling obligated to check off some big construction projects for. Anything, anything else, if, if that makes sense, or.
And, and the end, what's the difference? If you have.
The difference is that it was existing versus new construction.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, but once it's built, how is it different?
It's different in that it was built, because, because it. I mean.
But in the.
I'm giving you, I'm, I'm trying to come up with some out.
Right, so.
This pre-existing non-conformity.
Yes, for the use that was granted.
We're keeping up with times, we, our bylaws are constantly changing with accessory.
Needing use, yeah.
Dwelling units, they are, but this is separate, this is something separate from that.
Let's see how it's not more detrimental. All right, I think, so I think the next step here is to officially withdraw the application. The current application, yeah, yeah.
One has to be, um, assigned in writing, signed by the applicant, written, the withdrawal.
Okay, do you want us to continue so that we're active? You want us to continue until he comes in and gives you a sign, and then does this just go away, or? If he withdraws?
I remember that I was.
Yeah, kind of.
I think that, you know, we can take his word for it, and then he'll bring in a signed, written request for withdrawal. And withdraw without prejudice.
Yeah. Okay, so, so Addison will need just a written, your withdrawal, um, note sent to Beth, to Beth.
Yeah, signed, to the sound of board of appeals.
Yeah.
That you'd like to withdraw the application without prejudice. Meaning you can reapply.
And then reapply. Not as a modification, but as a new special permit, yeah.
Sure.
Yep, and. Does anyone wanna make a motion to waive the application fee for this second application?
Do we need a motion to waive the fee?
Uh, you will, and, um, you would need a, a motion to accept the withdrawal, right? Yeah, on pending receipt of the written request, um, for this application, that would close that out. And then you can work on the new application, but.
Okay, so let's start with, uh, accepting the, a motion to accept the withdrawal pending receipt. Anybody wanna make the motion?
Both are Kobe.
Yeah.
He looked excited to do it.
I'm, I'm okay doing it, I'm okay doing it, I just wanna make sure I do it right, so that I'm not wasting your time for a third, a third, uh, meet, or, you know, third or fourth, or. You know, I want it to do right the first time, so that, that way, you know, I don't present it, and then you guys say, oh, it's wrong, do it again, but. That's, that's.
You gotta send Beth something in writing.
Yes, I will send her, right, uh, written letter stating my intention to withdraw.
All right, based on that.
Your motion, Beth?
I move, what am I? I move to accept the withdrawal once it's.
Pending the receipt.
Pending receipt in writing.
Yeah. Signed, second.
Right, okay.
Is that, you got that, Beth?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
She's typing right away.
Uh, Robert?
Robert, yes.
Kobe?
Kobe, yes.
Yes, I mean, yes, uh, Vicki's, yes, uh, do we have a motion to waive the?
I make a motion to waive the fee for the forthcoming.
Application.
Application for a special permit regarding one fifty-nine Brookline Road.
Second. Robert?
Robert, yes.
Kobe?
Yes.
Yes, yes, Vicki, yes, you know this. Thank you, Addison.
All right.
Look forward to seeing you again, and we can. Hopefully in a nice, tidy package.
Okay, sounds good, I'll see you guys at a later meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Close the hearing at this point?
Yeah, I would.
Okay, do you have a motion to close the hearing?
Move to close the hearing, second.
Second.
Okay, uh, Robert?
Robert, yes.
Kobe, yes.
Darling, yes.
Vicki, yes, all right, so I think there's one thing left, um. Just, uh, for folks, if you didn't see the email, John Page has resigned. I don't think willingly, if the circumstances have changed for him, so he, uh, virtually can't continue. So, reach out if you have any, know any folks who would like to have some fun times with us. And I get some good work done, uh, I posted in Facebook, if you wanna comment, you know, comment on it, say, yeah, yeah. Um, recommend us, and we get a few more to fill out. Um, I think we have two full ones, one full time, four members.
You guys are the three fulls, so we have two fulls empty.
Yeah.
And two associates, yeah, two and two.
Thank you, John.
So I don't know if he's on. So I think that is all we've got, we have a motion to c- close the meeting, move to close the meeting.
Second.
Robert?
Yes.
Kobe, yes.
Darling, yes. Vicki, yes, so, thank you, everyone.